I got this in the wrong place. Thank you. Meeting come to order, please. Roll call, press your present button if you would. Record it. There we go. Thank you. Uh, staff announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few announcements.
Uh, the first one is that item number 14, that was the public hearing for the text amendment, has been withdrawn, but you'll see that next month. Uh, you should have a revised staff report in front of you for item 17. Uh, you also should have in front of you, uh, your copy of the subdivision regulations that you all recently adopted. Uh, and then finally, I want to mention to you that there's a new voting system, uh, that, that the county has developed. We're not going to use it tonight, don't worry about that. Um, but it's, uh, it's one that I think is, is, is going to be, you know, fairly easy and, and be something that's a, a good thing for the flow of the meetings. Um, essentially, it, it allows you to make motions, second motions, vote, uh, with your smartphone or a tablet or something like that, so.
Give me a break.
So, there may be one or two of you that may need some help with, with that sort of thing. Uh, and if that's the case, just let me know. Like, um, if you don't have a smartphone or a, or iPad or something like that, just email me later or tomorrow or something like that. Let me know and we'll, we'll, we'll do what we can to, to get you the right stuff in front of you. So, we'll do that starting next month. And so, what we'll probably do is give you an opportunity to come early next month and, and just try it out, get, get comfortable with it. Uh, we may even kind of throw in a little bit of training at that same time for you, but, uh, you'll see an email, uh, from me regarding that. So, that's all I have. Yes, sir? Oh, thank you. Yes. Um, we also do have a request, uh, for a non-agenda item this evening. Um, you, you may remember Nelson Creek, which was a large dismount subdivision, uh, that you all approved. Um, they didn't, they weren't able to post their bonds in time. Um, and that what, it wasn't something that was, that, that they, you know, aired on. And so, they're requesting just for reapproval of that. So, if you vote to hear that, that would go on the agenda after the, the regular items, but before the closed session.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's take this non-agenda item. I need a motion, second, put it on. Motion and second, uh, discussion. Oh, uh, is that on the?
Yes, sir.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. It will be, uh, item 18 and a half. Consideration of the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. McCord is asked to be recused.
Minutes.
Minutes.
Oh, did I skip them? Well, I checked them. What did I do that for? I'm sorry. Uh, consideration amendments of May 13. Motion, discussion?
Waiting for approval.
Seconded.
Most made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, let's not screw it up again. Consideration of the consent agenda. Uh, Commissioner McCord is asked to be recused. Uh, staff, consent agenda?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin, uh, with item three, Clovercroft Preserve, Section Two, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $102,800. Recommendation, extended current amount for one year. Item four, Cox Lad Treatment Facility, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $50,600. Recommendation, extended current amount for six months with completion of this bo, this project required. Five, Daventry Wastewater Area, Performance Bond for Wastewater Treatment, disposal, $120,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance in the current amount for a period of two years. Item six, Daventry Section Two, Performance Bond for Water, $28,500. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of one year. Item seven, Daventry Section Two, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $60,400. Recommendation, extend in the current amount for one year. Item eight, Daventry Section Two, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $752,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance in the amount of $400,000 for one year. Item nine, Falls Grove, Section Six, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $179,600. Recommendation, convert to maintenance in the amount of $53,880 for a period of two years. Item 10, Southern Preserve, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $80,000. Recommendation, extend in current amount for one year. Item 11, Southern Preserve, Section Two, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $175,000. Recommendation, extend in current amount for one year. Item, item 12, Stevens Valley, Amenities Center, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $14,000. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of six months. Item 13, Vineyard Valley, Section One, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection, $80,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance in the amount of $24,000 for two years. Finally, dropping down to item 16, Final Platte Review for Daventry, Section Three, Reapproval, containing 24 lots on 19.45 acres located off Tullis Road in the 5th Voting District. This platte is in order and staff recommends reapproval of the final platte with the following conditions. One, the approved HOA documents shall be concurrently recorded with the recording of the final platte. Two, posting a performance bond in the amount of $370,000 for roads, drainage and erosion control. Three, posting a performance bond in the amount of $65,000 for water improvements as specified by Nolanville College Grove Utility District. Four, the posting of performance bond in the amount of $54,000 for the wastewater collection system. Five, the posting of performance bond in the amount of $46,600 for landscaping improvements. Six, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Seven, execution of stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And eight, that the applicant provides two copies of the approved final platte in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the platte. Now, item 18, Final Platte Review for Kings Chapel, Section Nine, containing zero lots on 6.4 acres located off Mullins Road in the 5th Voting District. This platte is in order and staff recommends approval of the final platte with the following conditions. One, the approved HOA documents must be recorded concurrently with the final platte. Two, prior to submittal of any additional final plats for this development, the off-site road improvements as stipulated in the traffic study findings provided by the county's traffic engineering consultant, including the second entrance to the development and associated turn lanes, must be completed to the satisfaction of Tennessee Department of Transportation. Three, prior to the issuance of building permits in additional sections, the internal roadway shall be completed to the boundary of Section Eight, uh, other than the surface asphalt mix. Four, establishment of performance bond for roads, drainage and erosion control in the amount of $1,100,000. Five, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in fa, Mill Crofton Utility District in the amount of $581,000. Six, establishment of maintenance bond for water improvements in favor of Mill Crofton Dis, Utility District in the amount of $87,100. Seven, execution of performance agreements for the above referenced sureties. Eight, execution of performance stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And nine, providing two copies of approved final platte in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and the recording of the final platte.
Thank you, sir. Motion on consent. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you.
Can we make sure that everybody's mics are on? Because I'm not hearing anybody's motions or seconds out here, so if not, then maybe speak up a little bit. I just want to make sure we've got them reported.
Thank you. Okay, presentation of agenda items. Beginning at item 15, non-residential site plans, uh, non-residential site plan review for Page High School, Phase Three, on 49.59 acres located off Arnold Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval of a revised site plan for Page High School, which includes approximately 125,000 square feet of new office and classroom space and a new parking area. A portion of the existing building will be demolished to accommodate the new building and parking area. However, student enrollment will remain the same. The future widening of Arnold Road has been taken into account as it relates to the associated access and drainage for the project, and the county highway department has been coordinating with the applicant on these plane, plans. The property in question is approximately 49 acres in size and located on Arnold Road. Adjoining properties range in size from one acre to 60 acres and are used for agricultural or residential purposes. The Stag's Leap development borders the property to the southeast and west. Water services provided by Mill Crofton Utility District and wastewater is handled by a private sand filter system. Staff has received confirmation from the Williamson County School System that the wastewater system can, can accommodate the proposed use. During the planning commission's review of the site plan for Page Middle School, discussions were held regarding the need for safe connectivity between the middle school and high school. The applicant has coordinated with the Williamson County Highway Department to create a safe crossing across Arnold Road for students. This crossing is shown on sheets C-1.0 and sheet C-2.1 of the site plan packet. All zoning ordinance requirements have been met, including the specific requirements associated with educational facilities. The submitted landscaping plan has been reviewed and approved by staff. Site plan is in order and staff recommends approval. One additional item, Mr. Chairman, Enick Gerald from Huddleston and Steele and Eric Gardner from the school system are here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of staff or school system reps?
I don't think, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, um, on the bottom of this, we talk about the, uh, crossing. I see it on the, the platte here, but when are they going to start that? I was under the understanding they were going ahead and they were already going to be starting that. And two, what I don't see on here is the sidewalk that's supposed to go kind of behind the, um, on the softball field, kind of behind the, I guess, the dugouts there. There was going to be a sidewalk. Beth might could speak to this more because we, she and I talked about it at, at that meeting, and they were going to do a sidewalk.
So, to answer your first question, I will turn it over to either Enick or Eric, and I will look at the second question.
Okay.
Uh, good evening. Um, I'm Eric Gardner with Williamson County Schools. So, um, to answer your question, when, uh, we bid the, the project to install the, the, all the equipment and everything for the, um, for the crossing, a couple weeks ago. Uh, we're going through contracts right now, and, um, as you may or may not be aware, uh, traffic signal equipment, uh, has a long lead time. So, uh, generally, it's six to nine months. So, um, it will be installed when, when, when the equipment is, is in, uh, which we expect to be towards the end of the year. That's when it'll actually be being installed. So, completion wise, I believe they have, um, three months from the time that, that the poles for the signal come in. So, we're looking at probably about a year from now when it'd actually be completed.
So, my question would be, knowing that it was going to be installed and knowing that it's six to nine months, why was it not ordered before two or three weeks ago? Do you know?
Well, um, I mean, we go through a, we go through a design process, a bid process and, and everything. And so, um, when the design plans were completed, um, that's when the bid process started. And so, that's when it was bid, when, when design was completed. So, this is, um, I know this is kind of on the tail end of the phase that's under construction. Um, I wasn't here when that, when the phase that's under construction started, so I'm not sure exactly why it wasn't, um, you know, it wasn't bid sooner. But I'm, all I know is, um, when I started about a year ago, um, we, um, we had the design going on this, completed design. And I know there was a lot of coordination with, with the Arnold Road project, and, and some of that was, um, the reason why, um, because we couldn't, uh, we couldn't install anything because that whole area was under construction. And we had to wait till it was completed, um, survey the area, and then, uh, complete the design.
Other questions? You know one?
I think Don was second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don?
Yes, uh, my question on that is, could there not be a temporary, like, uh, uh, signal like they use when they're tree trimming on a road or something like that, installed until the permanent one can be put in place?
Um, there could be. Um, that was, um, that was not something that's been discussed. Um, I mean, I can certainly look into, uh, that, but, um, as far as budget goes, that's not something that we had in the budget. Um, we could look into what that would take, cost-wise and so forth, um, but we would probably have to ask for additional funding to, to do something that would be temporary.
Uh, I'd like, I think that's something we should look into with the safety of the children.
We can certainly look into it.
Thank you.
Can you, Don, can I tag on your comment there?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us a commitment to come back with a, with an answer to that question?
Yes.
Next, next meeting?
Yes.
I'll write your name down and try to remember that. Okay?
I will.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it was in the-
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see through all this plastic glass.
That's okay. I'm on the screen.
Beth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you so much for, um, being here, Eric. I recall that when we were looking at these plans, there was quite a bit of discussion because we really appreciate all the hard work y'all have done on these schools. They're looking great. When you go on site, and this was discussed when we did our first approval, the softball field there where it's currently located, adjacent Arnold Road, there is a sidewalk that goes down into that softball field, comes up to that where the, you noted the back cage, so forth, and it just stops there. And so, all we did is request this body that the sidewalk be just extended to where you have the exact existing, so it would be perpendicular. Is that going to be, should that be noted on the plans, or is that future for us to look at?
So, Commissioner Lawthers, that is actually noted. It's shown on the plans. It, the label for the proposal, proposed sidewalk was dropped off by incidentally, but it is shown on other plane, other pieces of the, of the set that, that's, wasn't included in your packet, but it is shown on there.
Thank you so much, Erin. And would you suggest that we just, um, approve as is, or would we need to make a note of that with our approval, that though it's not indicated on the plan, can we, can we do that, just to say that we, we confirm that that's, that's been approved?
Do you have?
I don't have the exact-
I'm looking at, um, actually, I'm looking at C2 right now.
Okay. But, but you're talking about if this is the softball field, the area behind it?
Yeah, so, no, actually, can I show you? Can you mind coming up forward? I actually came up with an engineering design for this, talking to Kevin, because we were in the middle of the meeting, talking about this, and it was approved, okay? And I have a video too I can send you, Eric.
Okay.
All right, so right here, is there a sidewalk here like this, all the way up to this point? So, all we asked is this sidewalk be connected to this sidewalk.
Okay.
Student behavior. If you watch people, kids, especially in the rain with heels, they are not going to come all the way down here to access this only paved sidewalk to access this cross point to get to the other school. Student behavior has been going along this fence, Arnold's widening, but this we determined was no wider than the safe, um, access to this trail. So, students can access pay, current pavement, you don't have to pay.
Right.
This is just a small little section. So, that's what we approved.
Okay. Um, so, yes, to answer your, so your question is, can we consider that? Or?
On our original approval, I know you weren't here, but we don't know if we can approve this tonight based on what our plans aren't showing it. Yeah.
One thing that I'll, I will add, um, as you're aware with, with the, with the softball field, um, and I have daughters that have played against them there, uh, recently. So, if you're on the visitor's side, there's foul balls that are going onto Arnold Road, uh, over Arnold Road quite a bit. Um, we're actually talking about redesigning that in probably the next, not, let's see, this is Phase Three in Phase Four.
Sure.
So, um, I would ask that, before we commit to building sidewalk there, let us, let us finish with looking at the next phase, because most likely, we're going to revise the layout of the softball field, and then certainly, if, if it makes sense to add it there. And I understand what you're saying, I know. So, I'm not just blowing you off saying we'll look at it, but let us look at how we're going to possibly reconfigure, um, the softball field, and then we could certainly, uh, look at an additional path that way.
And it, I would just add, it is such a small amount of concrete.
Yeah.
And it's a very minor connection. What, from my experience, when this stuff isn't done on the front end, it is a lot of work. And in Nolanville, we've, we've written, I've written over $2 million of grants to get sidewalks and safe connectivity to schools and throughout a community. We shouldn't have to do that. We should be on the front end, making these connections happen for a very low cost. As the elected member from the county commission on this planning commission of my colleagues that I esteem, I am not comfortable voting for this tonight without a commitment for the full discussion that we entertained, and now it's, we're coming back up and it's, 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 it's new information. I'm comfortable approving it that the sidewalk will be included if this is going to be the infrastructure for a certain number of years, however you feel comfortable. But I'm not comfortable leaving something for the future, for however long that's going to be, and have students' lives not positively impacted by this very minor addition to connectivity.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Pause on this.
Yeah, we were, this was, this was actually with-
What happened to our agreement?
Uh, it was based on approval for initial approval. And then, out of courtesy of my longstanding relationship with Kevin Fortney, who, to be honest, there's no one I respect more. Kevin Fortney got me into grant writing years ago with the first Safe Rouse's School Grant in Nolanville of $250,000, okay? So, I went in to see Kevin afterwards to smooth it out because we were doing this in a meeting which we should have done behind closed doors, but we were visiting sites and videotaping. And out of courtesy, um, I did, had an engineering overlay, um, sent to everybody on this commission, just confirming so they understood what we were all talking about, because we don't have a way to do a visual we were discussing. But that approval was based on that sidewalk connection. So, I'm not comfortable saying wait and see. Um, we already approved that. I'm comfortable saying we could alter our approval if that softball field and that, and that infrastructure is, is significantly relocated. That's fine with me.
Beth, he agreed to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what happened?
I have never seen a plan that shows that connection. This, there is a, there is a, a, a complete connection from the, from the middle school to the elementary school with this, with this crossing.
Which we fought for, by the way.
And-
That was happened at that meeting.
Yeah.
And we, you know, I'm just going to be respectful here. We are all a team. We're not being critical.
Right.
We respect what you do, but we are the locals. We're, we're the ones to have eyes on the ground and how this stuff works pragmatically. We're just asking for something very minor that we got approval for.
Well, I will commit that if, if, if this was already agreed upon, what I've seen, it never, it never showed that connection. If that's what we've committed to, then we will do that.
Be assured, that's what Fortney committed to.
Okay.
And we discussed this minute sidewalk for at least two hours.
Well, and what I'll do is I'll resend everything I've already sent. So, you have it to Eric.
Back at it again.
And Jason Golden too. Thanks.
Rhonda? Your mic's not on. Can you turn it on from here? It shows you're on here.
Okay. I have a question about the student parking. As I was looking at the map, it looks like, I can't maybe, and I probably just can't read it very well, but it looks like it's been decreased. It doesn't look like there's nearly the parking that there had been before all this got started. So, I just have a question about that.
Commissioner, the parking, the parking shown meets the requirements for the minimum. When Phase Three, or excuse me, Phase Four comes in, as Mr. Gardner has said, the parking will be increased at that time for the next phase of it. So, additional parking is coming in on the, on the next phase that you'll see.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think in the, in the temporary time being, as we're moving off of the phase that's, that's about to be completed now, contractors already moved their trailer. So, we're not really going to have less ever. I mean, there, there will be some that's taken up by contractor parking and, and equipment storage and so forth. But, yes, the, as Mr. Madison has said, we, we are meeting the minimum.
Okay.
And we know, and we need more than that. So, Phase Four will, will show more.
Well, I have an, one other question, uh, regarding the crossing thing, since it's going to be months, maybe to a year. Um, what about just even an old-school crossing guard? Something like that to take care of that situation?
That is certainly possible. Um, I mean, the school corporation does not actually provide the, the crossing guards. Um, usually, that's by the local jurisdiction, uh, which in this case would be Williamson County. Um, so, I guess it would be possible that, uh, crossing guards could be, uh, employed out there. Um, you know, kind of to go further with, because the poles are taking so long to order, we're not building any of the sidewalk until the poles are in place, because we don't want to introduce, or we don't want to encourage stu, I mean, I know they're already crossing there. But, the more you encourage them by having a sidewalk leading to the road, the more they're going to use it, like, like you mentioned. leading to the road, the more they're going to use it, like, like you mentioned. So until the poles are in, we're not even going to start building any of the sidewalk to try to lessen the encouragement of people crossing there. So if, if the school is, is choosing to, to cross now, without the, without the crosswalk in place, I think, you know, probably, it would be in their interest to do, and when I say the school, I mean Paige, not necessarily the school corporation, but Williamson County Schools. But we can, we can discuss with them other means to provide safety measures in the time being.
Thank you. Thank you.
Am I on?
You're on.
So, Eric, what, is it the poles or the signal heads, or i- is it both, that are delayed?
Talk, and I, I've got to think now. We've got SNW doing one, and Stanstill doing another project. You know, I just asked them what the lead time was right now, and I didn't ask specifically if it was poles or signal heads.
And I don't, I don't know the, I know the poles are a delay. I know, I know that for a fact. I, I'm not fully sure on the signal. I would maybe, I think if it's going to be a year, we need a, we need maybe a simple interim. I, you know, Kevin Fortney, last time he was here, he, he made the comments that, you know, students cross there, they only cross with, with teachers, you know, all this kind of stuff, and we, we went into a whole deep dive into, well, don't we need a crossing? And, and we went into needing the signal, we needed the crossing, and, and basically made it a condition of our approval of the middle school plan. And, you know, I do, I guess I disagree with waiting on the sidewalks, because that was one of our biggest points was, if they're already crossing and Kevin admitted it, he even admitted one kid had gotten hit, luckily didn't get hurt, and that, we don't even want to revisit that issue, because that kind of flew all over a few of us. But I, I do think we need to get the sidewalks built, because there's going to be people crossing. There's going to be band, band students going over and getting banned instruments after school. If it is, you know, it just needs to be with management of the schools that says, nobody is allowed to officially cross that road unless there's a teacher with them. And I, I get, I know where, I know where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Because now we have a three-lane road. We don't have a two-lane road. We got a three-lane road, we got a wider road. And if, if it's going to be a year, we need to put up some simple signs that say, yield to pedestrians and crossing. And, because you either, at a signal, you don't put up those signs, but it, without a signal, you do put those signs up on a crossing. And so I think we need to do a couple, in my opinion, my professional opinion too, it, you know, if I had kids crossing this area, we were pretty adamant about it, and, and I, I 100% agree. I know there's delays, and nothing ever works out in a perfect world sometimes, but we got to come up with some interims, and we're not asking for hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're asking for a few signs, and, and some coordination with the schools, just to make sure we get safe crossings, because there are going to be crossings. And there's going to be, there's, there's middle school kids, based on the last meeting, that go over and take classes, and, and there just has to be an interim plan, other than waiting another year. So it's, I don't have a strong opinion of turning this down, but I, because I've known you a long time, Eric, and, and I trust, you know, if Kevin committed to it, you'll make sure it gets it done. And I, I think we should move forward with it, but I do think we have to look at an interim plan that, for the safety of the kids. And if nobody crossed that road, and this was brand new, I'd be, I wouldn't be as passionate about it, but it was, it was a pretty passionate discussion last year. So.
Amy Whisney, and I actually live out there. I live across the street from Paige, so I see it firsthand. I totally agree about the sidewalks. It's not that you're discouraging it. They do it. There's mid-no sidewalk, so I think we, I agree that we should go ahead and finish that. And I don't know that the crossing guard, because you don't know when they cross, I mean, they would just be out there, but I think that's a great idea. What I think should happen is the signs, you know, yield to pedestrians, and even marking the road, kind of where it's initially going to be, I think might be a good idea, too, because to wait a whole nother year. The good thing is, you know, there's a few good things with COVID. One is, shut the schools down in order for you all to be able to do all the work. And honestly, it looks amazing over there. I love in front of my house, where they, how they did the road. So not only do you have a three lane, you also have the big, what I call the, I don't know what you call it, the lanes that are like emergency, you know, where-
Like the right turn, or the turn?
It's not really a turn lane. It's like a, just a blank spot there on the, on the highway. But at any rate, so it's much wider. So not only are they still crossing, it's a much wider crossing now, but I will say the traffic flow is amazing out there. It's, it's great. Schools look amazing. So all that's positive for whatever is done, but I do, I do agree that it needs to move forward with something at least temporary.
And, so maybe, maybe not even looking at temporary. I mean, we, we have, there is signage that is part of this, this project. Maybe we can go ahead and, I mean, we can go ahead and get that installed on the front end.
And one other thought I had, I meant to have brought up, is if it's the poles, let's buy a wooden pole, two wooden poles, and put them up, in, in, in temporary state. If, if the signal head is there, and you can wire it, and, and I get that there's some redo there, but that may not be possible.
Can we keep the-
I know, I know the signal heads have a delay on them, too. So I mean-
Can we keep the wooden poles permanently, and not do the metal?
That's between you and the county and the, and the school system. So, but-
Don't, don't you speak for the county?
Not from that standpoint, so.
Sorry, Sammy and I have known each other for a while.
So, but, is there any other comments? I'm, I'm okay making a motion if, go ahead, Beth.
I had another question. I'm sure you're really familiar with the mid-crosswalk signs, and there's one even on 31A. They've done it on state routes. They've done them, you know, municipal routes and so forth. I'm not sure if you'd be more comfortable with that, if the crosswalk, and you had a mid-crosswalk sign, because it reminds everybody, it's a visual, that there is a crosswalk there, and it's a state law. I don't know if that that's a solution. What I do want to support is there is research that shows, you know what's less safe than a crosswalk, is an insufficient crosswalk. If students have a false sense of security, and they're not, it's not signalized or properly signed, or all of that looking, there are actually more fatalities than when they know, you know, you got to be so careful. So I know this is kind of intricate, and that's above all of our expertise, but just I am familiar with that research. So I just think you've heard all of us that we're concerned about the timeframe, but we hope the professionals can come up with a reasonable solution for the interim.
Can we not make these minor things you wanted to do tied to this as approval? Contingent on, approval is contingent on making those improvements? Is there a problem with that?
I guess I'd ask council and, and planning director for some information, please, on that.
Mr. Chairman, yes, you can make those, those conditions of approval. Yes.
Any further discussion? We now have three hours into this sidewalk discussion.
What I was, what I asked that we look into was the temporary traffic light. The signs are all great, if everybody reads the signs. You, the safer way is for the traffic signal light to control the traffic itself. And signs are not going to help if the kids, and the traffic don't pay attention to them, but they will pay more attention to a traffic signal light. And these signal lights are, these temporary signal lights are used all the time on the roads for tree trimming and different, different temporary situations, and it's a regular traffic light.
You talking about the thing on wheels with flashing lights?
No, it's, it's on wheels, but it's got the regular, the regular, like your head, your regular light on there with your, you know, your green, your yellow, and your red.
Oh, it's a traffic signal light?
Yes.
Okay.
And this way, you're, you're controlling the traffic that's, that's going down there. And, you know, they, they push a button when the kids want to cross, and the red light comes on and stops your traffic. The signs don't, maybe, that's my opinion.
Sammy?
I mean, I hear what, I hear what Don's saying, and I just think, I mean, that is a, while, while it sounds like a reasonable plan, it's a very costly plan. I mean, even, even renting or providing a temporary signal, you would have to provide that through a rental, and that would be a lot of money. So, I mean, we're talking about smaller money of, of doing, I mean, you can, you can sign adequate, proper, unsignalized pedestrian crossing per the MUTCD. No, it's not perfect, but it is, it is, there's unsignalized crossings all over, and, and it'll be much safer than what's out there today.
Anyone else? Your motion?
Approval of this, this plan, under the conditions that the sidewalk connecting the softball field infrastructure be connected to the sidewalk on this plan, if the softball infrastructure is going to remain in place up to a year, that that, that sidewalk needs to be included with all of the other infrastructure. That's a long motion, and I'll probably need to narrow it down. And also, the second condition of an interim plan for the crossing between Paige and middle school, coming back to us from the professionals.
So, I think we, we want to ask for the, the sidewalks connecting to the crossing to be completed. Add the striping on the interstate, across the road.
Without a timeline, that's of no value at all, from what our history has been with a school board.
Before school is open in August.
Put that in your motion.
That, that's what I just did, I did. And so, so we would like to see the sidewalks finished, the, add the striping across the road to be finished, and, and at a minimum, install the pedestrian, the, the adequate pedestrian signs to meet the unsignalized crossing for MUTCD.
And I'm going to accept that as my, an amended motion. I agree that to be my primary motion, if we have a second.
You say second? Motion now to second. Are, are we clear, sir?
No, no, I want to, I want to get clarification. Are you saying that it's, that we commit to doing the sidewalk?
Yes, if the infrastructure is going to be in place up to a year.
No, 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 we're saying you do the sidewalk.
That it's actually installed.
Yes.
That I don't know that I can commit to, because school's opening in less than two months.
I got a concrete crew can be out there in the morning if you want to start pulling, I mean, it ain't that big a deal, is it?
I don't have, I don't have a budget to just pull a con-, I don't, I can't just assign a concrete crew to do something. I mean, this is public money that I have to use, so we go through a bid process. I may be able to get our maintenance department to be able to do something like that, but I do not physically control crews without going through a bidding process to be able to install something like that. So that's why I have trouble committing to having it constructed in the next two months, because I don't have any means to do that. But I can certainly commit to it being on this plan and being, this will, this will be added to the plan where it is done. But to actually commit a crew to it, I, I don't have the means to do that. So.
Do you not have the means or the approval to do that? Because I know that at Sunset Middle and Elementary School, they were able to put long sidewalks from the front Sunset School all the way in, and we did the back part. Kevin was able to perform that in a really timely manner, less than three months. Now, I understand that this is such a tiny little portion.
Yeah.
It would not make sense from a fiscal responsible position to not include it, where you have concrete pores or so forth. I, I understand the construction world.
Yeah.
But I, I guess his, his before-school thing was tied more to the crosswalk. My motion was more based on this approval of this plan, that that would occur. So it, you know, I'm, I'm open for the motion for discussion, if people are comfortable, not with the two month commitment on that adjacent, adjacent sidewalk, but maybe we're talking more about the crosswalk. We're talking about two things here.
So was your crosswalk and your signal for the crosswalk all part of a single bid?
Correct.
Yeah. So you've got that part bid. So we can get the perpendicular crossing and the connection to existing sidewalks and/or asphalt pathway behind the softball field. We can get that in place. Is that an accurate statement?
So our contract, the way it is written, we will issue a notice to proceed with the contractor when we have verification that the poles are arriving. So I know you've, you've done this with-
Yeah.
City of Franklin and others. So we will not issue a notice to proceed until those are in hand. Now, can we talk to the contractor and see if we can do something? Yes. But our contract right now is we don't issue a notice to proceed until the poles are in.
And let me just say, man, I, I really, I appreciate you being here, Eric, and you're kind of catching the brunt of, of a year ago. So I, I appreciate you being here, and, and, you know, I, it, this is, you're, you're inheriting the problem, and I appreciate you trying to come up with a solution. And, and I think we just need to, I don't know how we do it today, other than to defer it, and y'all, and Kevin come back with a, you and Kevin come back with a different plan.
Listen, that's a good motion.
Yeah.
If that's the best thing. I mean, because at the end of the day, I don't want to-
We have been, we have been here a year from when we agreed what we were going to do, and now we have an agreement, we're not going to do it for another year. I'm getting too old to sit up here. I can't wait. I mean, it, it just goes on and on and on.
I, I can't disagree. I mean, I, I don't want to misspeak. I, I just want, you know, when I hear of a student getting hit, and it being okay because it was not an injury, and that was exactly what was said a year ago, I did, I did not take that lightly. And, and honestly, it, I'll leave it at that, and, and that's just not acceptable, because we heard on end, even from Kevin, that there were students crossing every single day. And, and it's just not acceptable for us to build a bigger, wider road. Probably one of the biggest, widest road is, is, or, or, not the widest, but one of, a very busy road with two middle, with a middle school and a high school, is Arno Road. And we, we just got to do something.
I would actually prefer, if, rather than delaying this project, I would rather see that the school doesn't allow the crossing. I know that's not possible, because-
It's not possible.
But kids are going to-
It's not possible.
Right.
They've been, they've been sharing instruments for the last 10-plus years. Can, can I ask a question? I, I'm really uncomfortable at this point. I have a motion on the floor, and I'm willing to withdraw it. We, we need more information. You know, government, we're here for public safety, welfare, public health. We're not here just to do upgrades to buildings and pretty buildings. We have an established problem between two schools that has gone on for years. Chairman Tommy Little has been fighting for this crosswalk, and he's my colleague, and he's been serving faithfully. I can't tell you how many stories and parents. I am not going to back down on this one. So I will, I will remove my motion. I am going to support a deferral personally.
Beth, let's go with the motion. Try to get this off, and it's a three-day conversation. Defer it until next meeting. You come back with a solution.
Okay.
You should know what you can do. You know what our concerns are, do, do you not?
I believe so.
You come back with a motion next meeting, and we'll go from there. How about that? Yes, counselor?
At this point, if you're going to consider a deferral, then we need the motion maker to withdraw the motion, and the second-
She did.
Yes. And the second to withdraw the second, and then a new motion on the floor.
Was there a second on her motion?
There was a second by Commissioner Waldey. And I'm, I'm going to change my motion and move for deferral.
Uh.
To next month, move for deferral.
With any contingency? What are you deferring for?
I'm deferring in light of the planning commission requiring additional information, and how the crosswalk interim infrastructure is going to be addressed, and also- and how the crosswalk interim infrastructure's going to be addressed, and also that plans reflect what was approved about a year ago. That's what the basis of my deferral is, that we do not have an assurance, we don't have a visual plan, and we're not comfortable signing off.
How about the deferral reading? I'll make a motion that we defer this until our next meeting, and you, contractor, come back at that meeting with a solution. Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I think that's probably a better phrasing than I did. I make that my motion.
So, I'm not trying to write your motion.
No, I appreciate some help.
I'm looking for a solution, so we're not sitting here a year from now.
I appreciate some help here, yeah. We just all are in the same team, we all want the same thing, you know, we're just all trying to get the best end result.
Defer till next meeting. You bring us back a solution. You know what the problem is. And that's best motion.
And then we, do we have a second? Okay.
We have two or three seconds. Are we good? Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Robin, Eddie, do it again. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, sir. I hope I didn't insult you too much, but this is getting frustrating for a damn sidewalk.
Like the commissioner said, we're on the same team, and I believe that, too.
Thank you. Agenda item 16 withdrawn to agenda item 17 was, you have a revised one in your plat, staff, in your packet, excuse me?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is approximately 16 acres in size and is located off Cross Keys Road, approximately one-half mile of Choctaw Road. The Alpinist requesting approval of a large-lot easement subdivision in order to create three lots off a new 50-foot ingress/egress utilities easement. At this time, staff recommends deferral to the July 2021 meeting. Highway superintendent has requested the ingress/egress utilities easement be moved to the south, and staff needs time to evaluate the revised location in relation to waterway natural area.
Motion to defer. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. No, one more. There we go. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 18 was on consent. 18 and a half, and I've lost it. Non-agenda item, final plat review, excuse me, for Nelson Creek reapproval, large-lot easement subdivision containing five lots on 26.49 acres located off Crockett Lane in the 5th Boating District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Final plat for this development was approved at the April 2021 meeting in order to create five lots off a new ingress/egress utilities easement. The Alpinist is now requesting reapproval of the final plat since it wasn't recorded before the approval expired. Staff recommends reapproval of the final plat with the following conditions. Number one, establishment of performance bonds for water improvements in favor of Nolansville College Grove Utility District in the amount of $170,000 for site work and $100,000 for Horton Highway Crossing. Number two, a notice of coverage issued by TDEC will be required prior to the signing of the plat. Number three, a land disturbance permit must be obtained for the overall development. And number four, driveway and drainage infrastructure must be complete, consistent with zoning orders requirements, prior to issuance of building permits.
Thank you, sir. Questions, staff? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Beth? Oh, you're right. My bad. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Now I'll introduce counsel. She could run everybody out.
And that that's perfect news because I want to support what we all do and I want to support what we do. So um you know I I think there were some really strong, you know, health safety workers sometimes. I think there was some more concerns about, you know, whether it was the work or the people and I think so then. I think the first thing is that people feel like well, don't you understand how the regulations go if they can't make it work when they already do? So then what we had is things that I had a hard time with coming out. The other big issue is most of the things that I got to do outside of the public side to get rid of them. Which part of their producer was, kind of, you know, having to do with the. But even though we talk about it, I think most of our needs are related to, you know, anything related to, and anything related to, well, I would talk about things like. Um you know, but there's specifics about the traffic issues that wasn't in the motions. And so part of there are these things that we're concerned about. We need to talk about it, but it's amazing. I mean, but but even though I'm pulling stuff out of the record, it's like, what do you guys think about? So and and you know, again, that's part of helping you all out, that's what I think. Part of it was, um, things that go through, um. No, no, we didn't sit up there and um, well, let me just take it up on my own. You know, to kind of look at me and and I can help you through that and we're all on the real time things that box us, you know. So it's hard for me to tell this far as to do this. So all that to say, I don't expect a very long time. What really does that have an impact on you? If they will be, the person who is, he will either remain between you all to consider something. Or he'll say approve it. It's just feedback, it's just a piece of proof. And that happens because essentially you're asking them to consider other things that you did. So there's the kind of the second one. So those are the two. Besides, the local government is not able to back the other person's decisions. So it's just the, you know, it's a lot of decisions that you. Individually or companies that filed it, that need to be presented in the, in the court. If we get that order, I think what this is gonna take, that's how I know this is um. They try to take that decision so we don't actually argue that decision. Some of the, uh, so, so they could go. And so they will, they will have to file, uh, to, and see if they need to, kind of, do this. But it's kind of a decision that's, I can't, I can't, I can't. But that's, you know. I don't have any, uh, 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 uh. Because we've done very well on this, we've been good. And and we, we don't take it, we didn't knock these, you know, we did good things. We had really good concerns, we had really strong, uh, opinions, valid opinions. We just didn't have it, watching it, like, we had watched it. Backed up with a reading, before. It's really difficult for this. So what, um, when we get that order, then we have to go. Yeah, and then one, one thing I would like, I would like for us to do is just, and part of it I think was, is that. That things go over just immediately and it would be that in the beginning and in the end too. And I hope that you know that, phone, text, and whatever. And let's talk through it because I would have recommended it before so that staff and I could get more of that. Because the motions are not a problem, you know, you do these things, staff regulations, because we've got those reasons. Uh, and so even if staff had kept their recommendations, it's important, actually, that these are clear. And, 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 and. Yeah, and you know, and if, if there's something that doesn't come up until that night because you're doing a public hearing. Because we don't help people that day. You get stuff and why and stuff, but you don't know what to do. So somebody walks in and they're like, hey, I think there's a, you know, here that's over there, we got that, and we need somebody to do, it's logical to do. Then let's defer it and send somebody out there to do that. So I'm not suggesting that you're supposed to know everything you can think about. Just do it. If you see something in the record, obviously, you can pass it. Maybe you can just call me that after, you know, I'm a fellow. It's just, you know, sometimes I don't know what, but if there's something that pops up in your public hearing, um. If I had thought that period was about. It's easy to, I mean, we're already exhausted because that is one of the, in far the strangest life ever. Because that's when you know that others, uh. Yeah, I think it's probably. I, I trust you all, and I think you have no idea how much I've learned. In the, period, I think maybe it's just. That was part of the discussion, so I'm, I'm gonna be. And I'll be serious with you about this because there's, there's a lot of. Yeah, he didn't say that this shouldn't be discussed, he just said that the government has to. So someone has told him that he has, we need to establish that we should have that, so we can, so we might as well. This, this, this is our growing, it's amazing. Um, you know, Sammy, I think, I, I agree with your point that we don't need to become a referral group. Um, but let's also step back and remember, this rarely happens with us. I mean, we get like maybe in the wrong office or at the, or everywhere, but y'all need to do it for yourself. So, you know, this is, this is, and the known way that it picks up is that you can adopt it. But it's also just one of those recent cases where it's got decent theories, that has some changes that we've already tried, that didn't, that didn't, that didn't. So I don't, this isn't necessarily an immediate issue, it's not something that I really think I worry about. I just also care enough and trust you all that I'm gonna be right this week about how. Um, because, so I, I don't, I don't know if you think this is a, this is a, this is a. But still, the statute of limitations. Yeah, but that's not a bad thing, it's a, it's a combination of. And because public events, they do, they do, they have, they do, they do. So, um, they have a year to, to prosecute, they filed the petition for cert, like, the way they filed off the. And it's just sitting in the first half, so they actually, they're going to sign it, and third is on the time manager. We have to do, because this is a task that I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. If they all been saying maybe not, prosecute their case, then it's good. So, I don't know, but they filed it in February, in the statute of limitations, we're not against it. It's just, I'm not, I'm not, I hope that they're telling the line, and they're going about their business. So. They have to file the summons, that's just a care, it's a statement, it's a, it's a. So that's okay, yeah, it's, it's. I mean, the record in retail looks like this, but the record. Um, so anyway, if that changes, I'll let you know that they have a year of filing it to serve it, and I feel that they. I'm not hoping there's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Yes, February, uh. Um, if y'all wanna see any kind of briefs, or any kind of documents in retail that I know, or to order, I'll be. Well, we don't have any, we don't have the, we don't have the.